Okay, good evening. Welcome to the bus rider safety meeting. We want to start off just by apologizing. We had some technical issues going on, but we want to be mindful of the time and to go ahead and get started with the meeting. My name is Yolanda Hamilton and I am the district's diversity, equity and inclusion consultant. The purpose of this meeting tonight is for us to discuss some safety concerns so that parents are on the same page with the Department of Transportation in terms of the bus guidelines and things of that nature. I would like to ask you at the beginning of this meeting, there is the YouTube chat. If you can provide us with a check-in for our virtual attendance, simply what you need to do is go into the chat. You want to enter in your first or last name, first and last name, the name of your student and their bus number. So we want to give you a second to do that. Also, if you're unable to access the YouTube chat, feel free to email Brenda Benz. She is the office assistant at the Department of Transportation. Her email address is shown here on the screen. And again, in the subject line of the email, you can put bus rider safety meeting. Please submit your first and last name, the name of your student, current grade and the bus number. And you can just write down or document Brenda's email address so that you can submit that following this meeting if you're unable to access the YouTube chat. Also, during this live broadcast, you can submit questions utilizing the YouTube chat. Or you can feel free to text 216-264-6621. That text line will send questions directly to my attention. The text line will be only open for the duration of this meeting. So at the close of the meeting, the text line will no longer be available. So go ahead and write that number down. I'll repeat it again, 216-264-6621. So for the purpose of our meeting tonight, we are, this is our agenda. We want to take the time to review some of the ongoing safety concerns and issues. Also discuss the importance of having updated contact information on file with the Department of Transportation as well as your, your building. We want to take the time out to briefly review the bus and safety guidelines, to hear testimonials from our bus drivers and also to talk how parents as partners can really be helpful to helping us to ensure and enforce safety concerns for the district. At this time, I would like to introduce Carrie Burgolt. And she is over the Department of Transportation. Carrie will be sharing briefly about the safety concerns and behavior issues that we are seeing, that she and her department are seeing ongoing. This, as of the prior to winter break. And this consists of several fights and altercations that have been occurring on the various bus routes. The excessive use of profanity. Having students move around while buses are in transport, which really compromises safety. Ongoing disrespect towards bus drivers and staff on the bus. And also an influx in students not abiding by the mandates, mask mandates. And again, these are ongoing safety concerns and they are in violation of our bus guidelines. And I'd just like to invite Carrie at this moment to chime in and to share some of the concerns and safety issues that have been ongoing with the several buses.
Might be muted.
Yes, Mrs. Bailey, can you unmute Carrie, please? Hi Carrie, you're unmuted, but we're not able to hear you.
You know what? I'm going to do a conference call with her. Is that okay? There, you can't be heard. All right, do you want to put you on speaker? Okay, I'm going to put her on speaker on the phone. She can hear us. Okay?
That's fine.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Carrie. Carrie. Carrie, go ahead. We lost her. Okay, go ahead, go ahead. All right, go ahead. They're listening. Something, she's having problems. Okay.
Carrie, maybe if you log off and log back in, that might sound serve your, solve your sound issue and I'm going to continue moving on with the presentation and we'll give Carrie some time to log back on. So again, the bus guidelines were sent home prior to winter break. Again, Carrie's the director of transportation and she sent those out. It's very important for you to go through each of those guidelines and to review them with your child. Again, the guidelines that are mentioned are what we expect students and parents to abide by as they are accessing busing privileges because again, having the opportunity to take transportation with the district is a privilege. And so these bus guidelines were reviewed to really ensure the safety of your students. And they are not compromisable. What that means is that there are certain measures that are outlined in the guidelines that we have to abide by according to the law. So for example, as I mentioned with some of the ongoing issues, having students be seated during bus transport, that's a non-negotiable. There are other non-negotiables, including not allowing parents to get on the buses to talk with drivers or students for any reason. Again, that is against the Ohio revised code and law for parents to be on the bus. So it is important that you read through those guidelines that were sent home, that you take the time to review each of those measures with your child so that they have an understanding of the expectations that you have for them as well. I want to also encourage you to please ask your child in conversation to make sure that they understand what those guidelines are communicated because we want to make sure that they also know what is expected of them in terms of behavior on the bus. So that ensures that you and your child are on the same page as it pertains to roles and guidelines and expectations. Also, we are asking that you sign and return that document by January 7. If by chance, the document was lost in transit or you didn't, you misplaced it, you can again, reach out to Brenda or Carrie. Their email addresses will be provided on the last slide of this presentation. They would be more than happy to send you over an electronic copy. You can sign it and scan it and email it back to either of them. Or you could also send it with your child to return to their bus driver and we can make sure that that gets on file. If you have any questions concerning the guidelines, again, feel free to submit those questions to the number provided earlier in the chat or to submit them in the YouTube chat. I'm glancing, I don't see any parent questions or concerns coming in, so regarding the guidelines. So we'll continue to move on.
What is the number to text a message again?
Okay, the number is 216-264-6621.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and we have Carrie joining us.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I came in through a phone. I don't know what was going on with the computer. I apologize for that, but hello, everybody. I'm Carrie Burkholt, the supervisor of transportation at the bus garage. I just wanted to go over a few of the issues that we've been having on the buses pretty much this year. And understandably so, I know it's been quite a year, very different to what we're used to. But we still have to keep some kind of control on the buses, safety, mainly safety. We've noticed a lot of times we've had students not wanting to stay seated. The main thing this year is the masks and we're not doing it to be mean or because, you know, we like to see the kids upset. It's safety, safety. We want to keep everyone healthy. We want to keep everyone in school. So to see that happen, the mask mandate is very important. So that's really big to talk to your kids about. A lot of loud yelling, getting up, moving, and I know the kids, they get out of school, they went online. If they could hold off till they get off the bus, it would be wonderful. So those are some of the really big things that we wanted to touch base on. Mary will go over some of the stuff she's been seeing on her bus and Brenda as well. So if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call us at the garage or send us an email, whatever you're comfortable with. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay, so now we're going to go into our bus driver testimonial. So if our drivers that are on the phone, again, Ms. Bailey, we don't necessarily know you each by name. But if you can just indicate by raising your hand, Mrs. Bailey would be happy to unmute you and then we just want to hear from you in regards to what you're seeing on your actual bus routes. So Carrie, I know we have Ms. Mary Jo joining us and are there other drivers that are on?
I believe she's the only one that was able to get on.
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, Ms. Mary Jo, if you can share with the parents just so that we can understand, what are you seeing that's taking place on your bus?
Well, the children is very unruly. The languages they use, I can't, it's unbelievable. They don't sit down when you're driving. The bus start moving, they start moving. They're always jumping up and down trying to cross over from one side to the other. Again, the languages they use and you wouldn't believe. And the fights is just on, you know, it's not the way it's supposed to be. They're supposed to get on the bus, sit down and for 15 minutes, that's all it takes. So these are just some of the things and the parents is outrageous. You know, they, they want to get all up on the bus. They want to get up in your face about their child is being beat up or their child is doing this and that. And none of them are angels. Believe it. So that's just some of the things that I have problems with.
Okay, so Ms. Mary Jo, if I hear you correctly, you know, having some challenges with redirecting the students and their behaviors and also just communication with parents. So again, to those that are viewing, this is an ongoing challenge that we're having. And so again, we are really encouraging you to have those conversations with your students to go through the bus guidelines to make sure that they understand what is expected to them, but also reinforcing to them in terms of the role of the driver and having respect for the driver and not violating those rules by using profanity or showing disrespect to the drivers. There was, I actually had the opportunity to sit down and to talk with the drivers and again, they're very passionate about their jobs. And their goal is to get your kids to and from school safely. And when you have a few students that are disruptive, that are walking around, that are not complying by the rules, that compromises the safety of all students that are on the bus. And so again, we just want to reiterate that we are coming to you this evening to inform you of the concerns because again, this is a matter of this is a matter of safety for all students. So I just want to take a pause and to check to see what there's a couple of questions that have come through. One, I am, good evening, I'm watching the bus rider video. The volume is really low and we can't hear. If anyone else is having that problem, I would encourage you to check your personal device. It may be on your end. I believe that the volume internally for our Zoom chat is up, so no one else has, no one else has text about that. The next parent is asking, are there any write-ups or consequences provided by the drivers? That's a good question and I will allow, pose that to Carrie. So Carrie, the parent question was, are there any write-ups or consequences that are provided by the bus driver? So that is, as it relates to like the violation of the guidelines.
Absolutely. And that was all listed on the bus rules and regulations we sent home with the consequences. If it's something like first time offense, the drivers, they do give warnings. They do ask them nicely. If it continues, yes, they will get a written referral. And depending on the severity of it, which you will see on the paper, will depend on how it will be handled. They all get turned in to me. I will call the parents. If I don't get ahold, we always send a copy home, no matter what happened on the bus. So after three times being told about the minor situation and being written up, they will get time off the bus, depending on the situation. And like I said, that's pretty much written out in there in more detail of how it would go. So if you got that, look it up. If you didn't get it in the mail, call me, stop up at the bus garage. We can get that to you. I can mail it to you. I can email it to you, whatever is easiest for you. However, we will do bus suspension. So if there's a fight, that's automatic. If there's a fight on the bus, both sides will automatically get time off the bus. Stuff like moving a seat or something like that, we will give them chances. But if it's something that continues, we have to show them that we're, we're not going to be able to have that. It's just a safety issue. If that bus has to stop fast and your child's moving seats at that time, there's a good chance that your child will go flying and we don't want to see that. You know, our main goal is to drive your children safely going from school. So we're not, like I said, we're not doing this to pick on any students or anything or make the end of their day miserable. We just want them to get home to you safely. So that's the reasoning behind the bus suspensions for continuous referrals.
Thank you. And again, if you have any more detailed questions, you can feel free to email Carrie or Brenda. Again, their information will be provided at the end of this presentation. So thank you, Ms. Mary Jo, for sharing the experiences of the, for the, from the students and your perspective on the bus. And again, parents, we want to work together. We want to partner with you to ensure the safety of all students and staff. Okay, moving on, a couple of other things that I want to note with the mask mandate. We understand that this has been a challenging time for all of our students and families. And we understand that sometimes in the rush and but hustle and bustle of the morning, you might forget your child's mask. The district does provide masks for students, but it's important that understanding it's a resource that we provide. But again, we want to be, we want to be diligent with how we manage those resources. And so while we are providing masks for your students, we would just ask you to again, talk with your students so that they know to keep their masks because what we're seeing too, and Carrie, you can chime in, is that sometimes before even reaching the school, the mask comes off. It's left behind on the bus. And again, for sanitation purposes, but also safety, especially with the spread of this new variant, just again, reinforcing to your child, the importance of proper mask wearing and keeping your mask on for the entire duration of the bus route and the school day. Meaning wearing the mask over their nose, covering their mouths and not just under their nose. And we know that it is challenging for our, especially for our littles because they're in masks all day. But again, it's just what we have to do to keep them safe. Carrie, I believe that that was another issue that you were seeing as well.
Yes, absolutely. And we've tried to be real lenient with the mask because it's new. It's new to everybody, especially the children, little ones. It's really hard, you know, for them to understand the whole reasoning behind it. They're getting better, the little ones with it. However, we've noticed now people are getting a little too lenient with it and we are handing out, every day a bus will take a pack of 100 masks on their bus and they are gone for each bus. They're going through it and a lot of the problems we're seeing is they see them coming out without a mask. They hand them one, they put it on, they get on the bus. It comes off before they even get off the bus. So when they're getting off the bus, the principal's handing them another mask to go into the school. They're not keeping them on. It's just, it's getting bad, you guys. It's getting really bad and just even with them having it down, but they're taking them completely off. We need to make sure the children are wearing the masks over their nose, over their mouth. We don't have a lot of bus drivers right now. We're doing the best we can. The drivers have been great with helping each other out and everything. We can't lose the ones we have. We need them. We need your children there, you know, we were trying to make it work. So if everyone really could push that issue with the children, it's huge right now.
Yes, and it's, it's very helpful because we are seeing other districts or in surrounding areas having to close down because staff, being understaffed or being sick. And so again, we know that masking helps us to mitigate this. A couple more questions that are coming through YouTube. What are we doing to keep the, the smaller children separated from the older children? And also, does this apply to preschool riders? Have their own bus.
We have all the preschool children going on their own separate bus or the van. Now the kindergartners are on the regular buses. Kindergartners, we try to keep to the front of the bus unless they have siblings on the bus. We encourage families to sit together. So we, we try to have that happen. But if they're a single rider kindergartner, we do keep them to the front of the bus. We only have so many front seats. So not everyone's going to be in the front seat, but we like to keep them close.
Okay, we have a few other questions coming in as well. One, one student, one family wants to know, can they submit one form for multiple students? They only receive one form via mail. I'm sorry?
We took first separate forms just because they may be on different buses, different schools. If they're in the same school or on the same bus, if you want to add their name and just put them both to the same bus number, they'll be fine. But I'd like to keep them separated by bus so we know who we're getting and.
Okay, so we like to keep them, the form separated by bus, but if you put like your different students' names on one form, at least indicate their bus number. Also, the second question was how are parents able to communicate concerns to the drivers? For example, if the child is having an issue on the bus, should they contact you or Brenda directly?
Yes, please. We try to avoid as much contact as possible with the drivers themselves. Just we don't want anything to get heated in front of children. If there's an issue, we really, really recommend that they come and call us, stop at the bus garage, talk with us. Usually something minor and we can work it out. And not only that, it slows down the bus route and then we get a million phone calls because the buses are running behind. So we do encourage you to call us and we need to set up a meeting with the drivers. We could do that as well and talk together in the meeting room or something.
Okay, and then there was another question. Can we address timeliness? My middle schooler has had to wait 15 to 20 minutes in the dark and cold for the bus.
Yes, it's been a rough year for everybody. We've had a lot of issues with the buses on time. We've had to combine routes. We've had to change routes very rapidly because we've lost drivers. So yes, there are times we run late. We had a lot of construction when the weather was so nice. Hopefully now it's getting a little better because we cleared up Broadway with a mask for a very long time. Sometimes there's issues at the schools. We get held back. We try to do our best to stick to the schedule. If you're noticing, it's been since the beginning of the year and they're coming 10 minutes later, call me and let me look at the cameras. Let's see if we could work something out and change the time maybe by those 10 minutes so they're not out of the wrong in the cold weather.
Okay, and there were, there was another concern that came in from a parent regarding the bus and timing and arrival. So again, if that's an ongoing issue that you're seeing with your particular bus route for your child, please feel free to reach out to Carrie or Brenda so that they can take a look at that. Again, also just asking for your grace and understanding that we have to be flexible with the shortage of drivers and also to Carrie's point about changing bus routes. In addition, there was another family, daughter, let's see, hello, my daughter rides bus 24. This is her first year on the bus and she's in kindergarten. And she begs me not to ride the bus and says that the children are loud and unruly on the bus. And the driver yells and talks to the kids in a way that she doesn't like. And she said multiple times, there has been three children in a seat. I understand she's small, however, she speaks very well and tells me what, what is going on. So a parent just being concerned about, yeah, again, as we all are concerned about some of the unruliness that goes on on the buses. And again, that's why we're meeting tonight to ask parents to partner with us in terms of enforcing those guidelines with their students. Also, a couple of parents are saying they haven't received a form. If you have not received a form with the guidelines, feel free to reach out to Carrie or Brenda. Again, on the last slide of this presentation, their contact information is there or you can call the Department of Transportation. And I just want to go over in terms of opportunities for you to partner with us, parents as partners. So having the Transportation Department partner with you as parents to really help to enforce those rules. So we really would like to start a state, a bus rider safety committee with the district that would consist of parents and representatives from the Department of Transportation. The purpose of the safety committee would be again, to work with parents to help enforce the safety guidelines as we have outlined. Also to maintain regular communication with the drivers and to understand issues and challenges. So for example, that parent committee would be able to meet with Brenda or Carrie at designated times to talk about what are some of the concerns coming from the parents that are on this route? And vice versa, being able to share, hey, bus number X, Y, and Z, we're experiencing this ongoing issue. Help us to reach out to the parents, to really talk to children, to reinforce the safety measures that we need to put in place, right? So basically, working as a liaison to create positive relationships between parents, drivers and the Transportation Department staff. Oftentimes, we know that it's hustle and bustle in the morning and afternoon. Parents have to get to work or their designations and they are dropping their kids off and just kind of waving. And that's really the extent of the relationship that you have with the, the driver and, and the Department of Transportation. We want you to know that we really value safety. We really want your kids to be protected and safe while they are and having a good experience during their transport. However, we need you to partner with us by reinforcing those rules to your parent, to your students, excuse me, and also to foster account, accountability. So there should be consequences for behavior, just like at home, there are consequences for behavior. And also understanding that when these guidelines are not adhered to, it compromises busing privileges because those are the standards that the district has set to maintain safety. And so there are consequences when those are violated. So again, in closing, I would like to again, encourage you all to please also ensure that your contact information is updated and on file with the Department of Transportation and the school district. This is very important. In the event of an emergency or urgent issue, we have had some challenges with contacting parents because cell phone numbers change, contacts change, and we don't have that updated information in our system. If you are not sure if your contact information is updated, again, you can always reach out to Brenda and Carrie to provide that updated information because in the event of emergency, of an emergency or an urgent matter, we need to be able to contact you regarding your child. So again, that is something that in addition to turning in the form that you want to make sure you take care of as soon as possible. Again, if you need any further clarification on anything that we discussed during our time tonight, you can reach out to Carrie Burgolt. She's the transportation supervisor or Brenda Benz, the office assistant. Their email addresses are here along with the number to the Department of Transportation. We want to again, thank you for taking the time out to join this meeting. Again, we apologize for the technical difficulty starting off. Please be sure to also submit your attendance for this virtual RSVP for attending this meeting. And another parent chimed in, a couple of questions. Would it be helpful to create a parent committee for the bus, a group of parents that meet bi-weekly? And that was submitted by Ms. Sheena Fryerson. Parents can meet with bus drivers to discuss potential issues and build relationships with bus drivers and others. And if there's a shortage of drivers, are there any job vacancies available? So there are job vacancies, correct, Carrie? Can you just, can you direct them? Where to locate the job vacancies? Are those are posted on, the job vacancies are posted on the website, correct?
Yes, I can go right to Garbo Lake City Schools website, right into the quick links. And there is an employment section. You can click on that. It'll bring you right to all the transportation we have. We have bus driver positions, we have bus aid positions, we also have van driver positions if you're not comfortable driving the school bus. So, if you do wanna drive a school bus, we have an OBI, an onboard instructor that will train drivers. And as for the parent committee, I think that's a beautiful idea, we would love to have more communication with the parents, um, to meet with the drivers, to know more from both ways, you know, what can help improve the the bus and the transportation to and from school, to make the ride closer for everybody. So, yes, I am all on board for that, if you wanna contact me, and we can start, I would love to have a parent from every single bus to represent their school bus, so we could all meet together, we could do it at the bus garage, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so thank you, Ms. Fryerson, and if you are still tuning in and you want to be a part of that, please again, reach out to the contact information provided here. There was one other parent that chimed in regarding a safety concern. My son is crossing the street at a bad intersection where cars are flying, I'm concerned that one day he will get hit, the bus driver just takes off. So again, it's important to be aware of your surroundings. I know that, um, the buses, when they stop, they do put out the stop sign, but you do have people that speed around that, unfortunately. So it is important, um, for, you know, for safety, to encourage your child just to be aware when they're crossing. I know that, um, Carrie, are there any, anything else you wanna add to that?
Um, absolutely, if you are at it, the children shouldn't be crossing in major intersections, the bus should pick up on their side of the road. So, um, please call us if there was some kind of confusion with that, or the stop is not a stop where they have to cross, you know, we don't want them crossing if we don't have to. So if you can call us, and we can look that over, um, Brenda or myself could do that for you, and we'll see what's going on there.
Okay, and again, before we close out, someone is asking, how do we submit the RSVP to confirm that you tuned into the meeting? So again, um, you can submit the RSVP to say that you attended by emailing Carrie or Brenda in the subject line, you wanna type, type in bus rider safety meeting, and you will just put your first and last name, the names of your students, and the bus number that they take. I'm sorry, go ahead, can you repeat that?
If you'd like to be on the parent committee.
Yeah, all, yes, and also add if you would like to be on the parent safety committee. So again, um, thank you for your time, thank you for partnering with us, and we look forward hopefully to hearing back from you all regarding involvement with the parent safety committee. And again, I wanna just acknowledge and thank Ms. Bailey for helping us to work through our technical issues. I wanna also thank, um, our building leadership. We have Mrs. Fremo from William Foster who is on tonight, and Mr. Fording. Um, do you have anything that you would like to share in closing? I wanna, if so, I would like to give you the opportunity at this time before we close out the meeting.
Um, no, not really, I just wanna say thank you to all of our families who have joined us this evening. Um, sorry for the technical glitches, I'm not sure what happened. Um, but you know, I do think that, um, the kids are getting better with the buses, um, you know, and thank you for supporting us when we do call you. Um, and again, we, you know, encourage the kids before they get on the bus, when they get off, um, just proper bus behavior, um, so I'm hoping that, um, with our encouragement, we will continue, you know, to, um, get the kids safely. There are times where I know the administration team has had to ride the buses, um, because there has been, you know, some concerns. Um, and if you could just, you know, talk to your children, like we said earlier in the presentation, about staying in your seat, um, on your bottom, having your masks on, also to the cell phones, sometimes those become an issue with the buses. Um, so just being very mindful of what they need to do. What we tell the kids basically is, please just sit in your seat, get a free ride to school, keep everyone safe. Um, you know, the routes are not very far, the kids are not on the buses very long. Um, but you know, when there are behavior issues and so on, they sometimes have to stop and go. So again, um, and behalf of Mr. Fording and I, you know, if you have concerns, reach out to us as well, we will try to help you. Um, I do know that parents have been sending back those forms this week. Um, Carrie and Brenda, if you can give me some paper copies of them, um, as parents, and then parents, if you need them, just call my main office, my secretaries will get them to your children, and you can sign off, I know some of you do not have printers at home, um, but we can try to get you, you know, those papers as well, but the kids have been bringing them back. So, whatever we can do to support you while keeping the kids safe and getting them back and forth to school safely, um, is all of our ultimate goal, so thank you.
Yes, we'll get your copies tomorrow at the school, too. And thank you, guys, also, for the support you've given us, appreciate it.
Thank you, and Mrs. Bailey, before we end the broadcast, can you, um, can you put Carrie and Brenda's email address in the YouTube chat? Okay, thank you. So again, thank you all for tuning in, thank you for your time. We're gonna put those, um, email addresses in the YouTube chat. And again, if you have any other questions or concerns, feel free to reach out to Carrie or Brenda, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.